...board trustees for May 12, 2015 order. Where everybody stands, run this and say the like.
The allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. First of all, the business, the agenda before us. Is there any addition or deletion by fellow board members or staff? Does anybody have anything they want to add or delete? Okay, hearing none, the agenda is presented. First order on the agenda is the sheriff's report. And I'm going to turn that over to Lieutenant Springer.
Lieutenant Ron Springer, Sheriff Meyer. You should have in front of you the calls for search per April. We're at 959 calls, that's up slightly compared to 2014 same time period. Crash at 74, that is up approximately 17% compared to 2014. Crash at an injury, under nine, that is significantly lower. Alarm calls 132, that's up slightly compared to 2014. Traffic stops, citations and arrests are all down right now. And the crowds are dramatically as far as traffic stops and citations. We're hoping with our grant getting ready to be released, we've got 200 hours of grant enforcement hours coming out in May here. We're hoping to be able to increase some of that. So we're going to bring that funds from the state back into the township on some aspects of it and do some extra enforcement inside the boundaries of the township. Current concerns within the township is we probably have approximately 10 victims. We're still reviewing some of the reports. And the victims are going to be from break-ins in automobiles. And when I say break-ins, automobiles actually were not locked. So people are going on shopping through our cars and moving parked in our driveways. So it's really important at this time of year, as it is every time of year in the spring, to remind the residents it's important to lock your vehicles. Be valuables out of sight, keep them in their car, in the trunk of the car, or take them inside your house. At the same time, as people begin to do their yard work, they have a tendency of leaving the garage doors up and going out in the backyard. That's a good opportunity for a criminal to garage sale in our garage. They don't pay attention. And once again, we'd like to remind the residents, be careful in that area. The car break-ins, as I call them, specifically were in the northeast quadrant of the township. We had a few in the northwest quadrant, but the majority of them were in the northeast. If you look down at another detective's report, you're going to see one felony theft warrant was issued as far as case closures. That's going to be related to these 10 victims. Still working on the case. We've, we've asked for you to search more related to this case. And we probably have two jurisdictions other than Plain Township. And probably one case in the county that's going to be added on this. So we're expecting to see much more closures on this time perils here. And overall, if you look at the three-year trend, we're up slightly to last year. But if you look back in April of 2013, we're pretty comparable. So no huge changes. Questions about the sheriff's report?
No, I'd like to go with this.
With the addition of the tridangles, tridangles.
Does it seem to say from a corollary aspect, maybe some of this is just due to the increase of population within the township with additional community or allotments being built? Apparently treating that, increasing going for residents and that and more people in therefore.
Absolutely, I can't see that there's a trend in the township of higher crime by anyone. That's not quite the situation. Or a population aspect of it. And we start to see even if we look back at the annual report, that we get peaks at different times of the year. Typically come to the summer months, this is a busy year time. And that's kind of what we're seeing right now.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This time, has anybody in the audience had any concerns specifically for the lieutenant or the detective from the sheriff's department? Okay, that concludes your sheriff's report. We'll go down to business, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is bringing back to the table the approval of the minutes from April 14, 2015.
I will subdue. Second discussion, hearing none. Roll call please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes?
This is the, this is from April 14. You need to understand, this is my.
Who was that?
This is me, we're just going to ask you to be certain.
Oh, good understanding, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Did you give the time of staying while I was on?
Yes.
Simply, thank you.
Okay, item number two is the mailbox damage complaint replacement procedures that were passed a few meetings back. Bringing that back forth for discussion as trustee Lena was not here at that time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe Icino, maybe to be discussed and then go from there.
Yes, we had a discussion about changing our policy on replacement of mailboxes. Therefore maintaining your property itself. And trustee Lena called me wanting to relook at this. He had some concerns about the policy we would have passed that night. So we'll go for discussion right now.
If I may, no disrespect to my board members because I wasn't here. And I guess I just wanted the voice. You know, I might get outvoted tonight, that's fine, but I just wanted the voice of my view on it. I think first, first of all, that's back to one of the things I do agree on, that the mailboxes that are rotten, that were replaced, and I agree, you both, you both and Joe put it on. I agree that if they're rotten, it's pretty tough to be replacing a rotten mailbox. Especially now I had to make sure guys are looking now, see if the rotten kind of the document of it. So they have an idea that did that mailbox rot away, falls over this year, then we know there was a rotten mailbox. I have no problem that, because I think people should be responsible for their mailbox to rot away. We shouldn't be putting up mailboxes that really were under the last hand. But the only thing I disagree, I personally think is that it's a disservice to ours. Because we're so well-known on what we do for our residents that I disagree on that if the mailbox is hit by a blade, which is very sudden, then now we're going to decide to pay for the mailbox. And it was only after what?
Seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars. And the only, and I told Joe, here, take a, take a wire, you keep doing this, eventually it's going to break. And that's what we do with our mailboxes, we do it, we plow, we plow so much. We're so known for our plowing, that we're constantly going back and forth on that street. And that snow is constantly hitting those mailboxes. You think, how many times in one week can we get snow? And that snow is constant, that mailbox, and eventually those boxes, some of those boxes are just going to fall over. And I just think it's a disservice. You know, we're so known to spoil our residents. I would like to look into it again if, if the mailbox is down, it's not dotted, that either we up the ante or we still replace it like we have. Now, I agree that these other ones are.
What do you mean up?
Four hundred dollars. Well, seventy-five dollars doesn't seem like enough money on some of the mailboxes.
Well, that'll replace the average rubber made.
But again, we're only talking about if our truck, if our drivers hit the mailbox. They're not, these guys are.
Today when we're replacing.
We'll go back, if you read the whole thing, we'll go back and we'll put them back up if they're not, you know.
I just sent one to Joe, what was it, Monday?
Yeah, we took care of that.
That, I mean, the rest, she was coming home from, yeah, had been in Florida for four months. Come back, said the neighbor strapped it up for, in the interim. They asked, hey, if we get somebody backed out. I sent it to Joe in Florida, you know, we provide the basic mailbox. We decided let's send this decorative and more than, more than meets the minimum requirements of the United States Postal Service to deliver mail.
Yeah.
That's really.
So we know some of these mailboxes are so, I mean, we know the prices that have been brought in front of the board, you know, from anywhere from 200 to 500 dollars.
I mean, if we believe.
I don't want to get in the mail.
I mean, the policy to me should govern the majority. And I mean, I think this obviously captures most of it. I don't think whether it's the three of us collectively sitting here today or if it's six years from now, whoever, whoever's on this board. Somebody maliciously or completely or even actually literally goes off and. Do we point it out? I think you take a situation like that out there.
I agree.
If I, if I, but for, you know, okay, Scott, I was who lives over off the north of your avenue. Hey, up and, up and down.
I guess part of the things that we see and feel here, it's not always us, even with the snow. You know, a lot of private contracts. The actual snow's coming from the other direction and stuff like that. And they're saying that it was us, they seen us, they seen us. How do we defend ourselves and say, no, it wasn't us? You know what I mean, and not get colligerate with our residents? You know what I mean, because.
Well, yeah, but the majority of private, that's usually one or two drivers in the lot, but that's not.
They get, they off, boy, they don't pay them way around. They went through that, but that's not.
You guys passed a resolution, we're paying seventy-five dollars now. Correct. And that's not, that's hitting it, or that's just us putting, hitting snow and snow's knocking you?
Because.
It's essentially damage to the mailbox.
From our play zone.
Wow, that's open.
Right there.
I feel every case should be looked at. And we're not, you know, just saying automatically, no. I don't think that's going to be the case. But we were looking at reducing the cost and it was costing us for some, you know, some of these newer allotments were restricting, you know, their residents to have the same mailbox. And they're made out of cedar or they're made out of, and those are costing them 200 dollars to get prepared.
Their hours. And that's why my allotment are 600.
Right, and, and, and Donnie, your lot, it's the same thing. I mean, at least, I don't, you know, it's, I don't care what kind of board it is.
Well, I'm saying, I agree, if they're rotten, then it's definitely.
Association, the deeds, the covenants, the expectations, you're signing up for right, right, right out of the gates. Whereas unfortunately, my neighborhood paid projects, rubber maids, plastic four-by-four with mailboxes, you get a couple, set, set a couple decorative ones. Still posts, yeah.
I was just looking for a way to cut our costs.
I see.
And I know sometimes maybe we drive too fast, but you know, the snow does got to get off the road. That's what our job is. These guys got a lot of miles of road. And like you said, this past winter, they were going back and back and back.
The mailbox, when you're weak and they're going to fall. I just don't know if seventy-five dollars is quite enough.
That's entirely, we'd like to raise that cost, it's, you know, it doesn't matter to me.
I just hate to not give that service to our residents.
Just talk to other communities and what they're, you know, that they were doing.
What were we spending before? Because I remember years ago, we discussed we would pay up to 200 dollars.
Well, I think that was on an individual box. Because we had a 500 dollar roll stainless steel box.
Yeah.
And we told them we'll pay up to 200 dollars for.
I mean, I don't remember, we did a policy that they didn't spend more than 200 dollars, no matter what kind of box it was.
We never put it in a resolution.
I'd be okay with that. But I'm just saying, I mean, 200 dollars is even awfully expensive. You might want to give us some more of a guideline at 200. If we stayed from 200 hundreds versus some of those that cost 500.
This brings the exception, this doesn't bring, this doesn't bring everyone.
I went out and bought a post and I got the alignment thing that went over top. And then I got the tee and I put the box in, it was a double box because my daughter knocked it over with her car. And I think I spent about 126 dollars for everything. And it's a, it's a nice setup. I mean, it's not identical to what we had in my allotment, but you can't really tell. I mean, so, I mean, that would be okay.
And that's part of it too. I mean, we have searched online to get the basis because they don't sell them, you know, every year they're coming out with new mailboxes. They don't always sell exactly what the resident has. When we went back, what we took, I can't.
We haven't even seen the net impact of this. So to me, to jump to judgment on something we just passed and then say, hey, you know what, let's go back, let's go back and go ahead and double down on it. And we don't know what the net effect, the net effect is. You know, if we had it the next winter and we start seeing, okay, every resident that we've placed is calling, is blowing up pouches lines or our phones. I think we revisit, we revisit it then, but I mean, at this, at this point, I think this is a new point because nobody, nobody can quantify, nobody can quantify, quantify this in the form of displeasure, residence. And the fact that we can take something under advisement is, is an exception. Because to me, this sends a message to the entire public that, well, okay, they went from 75 to 150 on their own. You know, a couple of us are going to have concerns. You can take it, take a few and make it sound as if, as if it's multiple. And next thing you know, people aren't here with, you know, similar, this needs to be 250, this needs to be 300. Let's at least, let's see how it flows out. I mean, if we're not getting pushback, well then, hey. Obviously it's working, but.
Well, a normal wooden post with a metal or plastic mailbox is 45 dollars. And then the, the, the rubber made ones that, you know, they can get hurt.
The ones that go all the way down?
Solid plastic that go up to like 75 dollars.
Those are the biggest culprits typically because.
And that covers that kind of box and that cost on file.
You know, a lot of that's got to do with the temperature of those plastic ones. When it gets real cold, they shatter.
So the barber maid shatter?
Sure.
So is that what we want to replace with?
Well, that's what we have been replacing them. If they had one, that's what they get. We try to replace everything in time. You know, I mean, it's a metal box.
For one thing though, is if the weight of the snow snapped and it wasn't rotten, I think we need to look at replacing that box. If it.
We don't get this now, we don't get that.
And if it was rotten, I agree, no, we're not going to.
We can move forward with that.
I, I'm hoping to know what Scott says, but I guess still for the record, for some reason, if this stays on this trend in mind, just for the record, I'm going to vote in Bell. So a resident comes up and says, these three trustees, I'm, I'm, pardon for that.
And then it becomes an issue, we can rethink if you revisit.
This board, whether before me coming on, when I sat out there, the crowd, being up here now, to anybody, nobody's ever said, no, we're not going to entertain it, I mean.
Becomes an issue, but, I mean, if you're saying 75 dollars will cover a rub.
Yes, we put records and we'll, we'll report back.
All right, thank you for listening. But if you think what you're saying, Joe, that 75 dollars will cover that rubber made.
Yeah.
So anyway, it's not like we're sticking a, you know, box on top of a stick.
It's like for like.
Yeah. All right, let's go to number three.
Unfinished business number three. I think I said on the record, we were going to mess this up and we did. We tried like heck to get the right verbiage with the right language on the zoning amendment. So what I've done is, I've gone back, I've attached the same verbiage as last time, the correct verbiage. But what we're actually doing is not adopting the recommendation of the Plain Township Zoning Commission. We're modifying it.
That's whatever you've got to.
We checked the wrong box somehow, so it's my fault. I should have come over and been more clear about it. So I just had a sense with all the paper we were shuffling that it was going to get.
But we accept it because we accept the modification.
It's absolutely accepted properly on the record, we just, we've got to.
Check the wrong box on.
So we need to modify that to be as follows. Modify the recommendation of the Plain Township Zoning Commission to be attached verbiage, which is attached.
Second, Mr. Leo, for discussion, hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Okay, item number four is to, resolution to rescind, resolution number 15, 215, which was a zoning nuisance abatement that had the wrong address.
Subdue. Second, discussion.
Sorry, actually that property has actually been cleaned up too, so. It has.
Roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And that closes unfinished business.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell, we will now go to business, O'Tarmer.
Thank you. Item number one is our O'Tarmer renewal. And they are again offering our CBL credit in the amount of 350 and an MVR credit in an amount of 399.50. And it's an insurance renewal for again, our property casualty and vehicle insurance with a $3 million liability limit for the period of May 5th, 2015 through May 5th, 15 through May 5th, 2016 in the amount of 84,899.50.
Subdue. Second. Discussion.
Please, I mean, 3 million is what we've historically carried.
It's what we've been historically doing. And I have to say, Mr. Kraft this time did a. Yes, and he really went through all of the new items that we've added on in each department, did a thorough analysis and was still recommending for improvement.
Okay, so we don't have a significant first enclosure, will we do that?
No.
Another discussion, hearing none, please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And that ends the business.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell, go to fiscal office before Mr. Fliss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number one on the agenda is a request for a resolution to authorize a payment of the pending warrants in an amount of 196,029.32.
I will subdue. Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number two is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize in April an amount not to exceed 220,000 dollars.
Subdue. Second, any discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number three is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the payment for the following medical claims provided by all parents.
Subdue. Second, any discussion, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number four is the financial report.
Any questions? Thank you, I think we'll go to five.
Fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize, the fiscal office to request an additional amended certificate of estimated resources.
Subdue. Second, any discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And fiscal officer number six is a request for a resolution by the board to authorize the following transfers.
Subdue. Second, any discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
I will conclude the fiscal officer report for tonight.
Thank you. Go to the news panels.
Thank you. Item number one is to inform the board that we will again be having an auction this summer. We're looking at some dates, probably end of June or third week in July. We'll be hosting it at our old fire station number four. Out probably, probably the third week in July, more we talk about it. Each department, believe it or not, after having an auction last year, has significant contributions to the auction this year. We have some old police cruisers. Parks has some significant contributions, even Rota's also. So we're putting together the list, we'll advertise, once again, I've looked up and we'll do the auction. And we'll bring that all together.
I wonder if you got that good of a marketing intention to draw it out?
We've spoken to him, the, and we're going to hit up some other ways to market with him. He does market it, I think it was more of the attendance, which everybody had control over. I think switching locations will help also. He does, he does provide a pretty good service for the cost, but it is marketed pretty, pretty happily.
I wouldn't have old this time again.
On old fire station four.
Do we, so see if any other joint local townships are any.
Yeah, the difficulty with that is, and, and we can talk to Dabnik in this time, is keeping track of theirs versus ours and co-mingling of any funds. But we can see if there's any way to try to separate that.
No, I was saying for somebody else or something, it's a weird thing actually. They draw, draws.
Yeah, if they had big items, that'd be, we could do. If it's a lot of little items, unless they sell it on a pallet altogether, it'd be difficult. So if we, if we talk to local agencies for big items or, you know, like we do with fires sometimes, it's like different things all in a pallet, you sell the pallet, I think that would be a disentangle. So we can make it that way. Yeah. Item number two, I wanted to talk to the board about a website I found called nixle.com. I've had Ross Goldmitch look at it. I've had Lieutenant Springer, Detective Koenig look at it, Chief Snyder, Joe Icino also. What it is, is it's a platform that helps keep our citizens and our community informed about what's going on in the community, whether it's a missing child, whether it's a baby accident where roads are closed, whether it's an emergency situation. To our public services, our public service agencies such as fire and police, it's actually free for them to put out messages that can be sent to your email, to your phone, to your Facebook, to YouTube, however, not YouTube, to your Facebook. I'm so technologically not advanced in that, since I don't let my kids use that. Twitter to get messages. And it's a way to keep our citizens involved about what's going on. Because oftentimes, people now go to the internet to get their information. And sometimes there's misinformation in that platform. It's easy to sign up with, it's free, there's about 65,000 public agencies that are using it. All you have to do is go to nixle.com and enter your zip code and click go. And then you will start receiving messages. It brings, you know, it's a way to bring our residents, public and safety forces together on one platform. Just like our monthly report tonight gave us those trending issues, that's something that can be put out there, like when we had the break-in on Abidale or if there's a spree of break-ins, it's something that could quickly be put on there and those residents are notified. So if the board would take a look at that and then if it's something you're interested in, it could be the front page article for our newsletter to really blast that out and give our residents notification and the opportunity to sign up and we could start using that.
Does it, will it just pop up as if someone checked your email?
Yes, yep, it just will go straight to whatever platform you signed up for, whether it's your email or text or however you signed up for. And you'll receive those notifications. I read about communities where they put out Amber Alert. They did not missing people on there, they warned about snow beans. So it's another way for us to get that safety service information out there. Item number three is a healthcare update. It's something we talked about when we last met about healthcare. And I wanted to let the board know about some of the information that I found out. I know one of the things that we were concerned about is how bills are processed if they're emergency or non-emergency at the emergency room. If we have an employee go to the emergency room and it's a non-emergency, they are paying more out of pocket.
Is that based on how the cost will go?
Yes, yes, it is. And same with stat care or urgent care. Because what we don't want happening was having employees use stat care or urgent care as a primary care physician. So in our plan, if you go to stat care or urgent care and it's a non-emergency, they're paying more out of pocket. We actually, since we implemented this a couple of years ago, we have had 50% less emergency room visits last year by 50% less people. So it has really worked out of our plan in cost to our healthcare.
And then I know you requested the information, but let's make sure we push that back down.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I, I've been meeting with every department, I just met with the road department and explained that. And then I'm also going to be putting together information and getting it out kind of in the email that I sent you guys today about, you know, maybe sending out flyers with that kind of information. Same with prescription drugs on how to save money. But it's, it's been a good. money, but it's, it's been a good, it's worked very well for our healthcare. So, and that's one of the reasons we're down 10% this year. So, and then, item number four. Is a resolution that Plent Township Board of Trustees to authorize the purchase of salt from Cargill Salt.
Sub move. Second, discussion? Just for the record, as we're purchasing this early, Jill, pricing, how much is this saving?
With the total purchase, it'll save us around $6,000.
I purchasing it now versus...
Yeah, I mean, yes. If we wait till after July, it'll cost us $6,000, probably, it'll save.
Can any further discussion? Hearing number one called please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And my last item under administrator is a resolution for, to appoint Joyce Ichikawa as the part-time zoning meeting secretary in place of the zoning assistant while she's off on maternity leave, to be paid at a flat rate of $50 and a minimum of two hours at one and a half times for each zoning commissioner, zoning board of appeals meeting attended for one 13-2-01, effective May 6, 2015.
Now, so move on to administrator number five.
Second.
Discussion?
As far as, probably right, we've got the other, that temporary that we've brought in, that was shadowing Stephanie there, is there a reason we don't use her, just give her familiarity, day-to-day handling, and so forth?
I think that Vicki has enough on her plate to handle filling in while Stephanie's out, and Joyce can easily step in, take minutes. I actually have received the minutes the fastest that I've ever received them, so I think it's enough for Vicki to step in at this busiest time and just take care of what she's got on her plate without a director, although I'm filling in on the interim to just do her day-to-day jobs.
Now, will the director be attending these hearings also?
Yeah, yes.
In the future?
Yes.
You can use that individual to take advantage?
You absolutely can.
Kind of forward, because I mean...
Yes.
And I'm just going based upon whether it's needing zoning needs to attend it passively and to monitor, if you want to watch it, report it to the public.
It's truly supposed to be a member of that board, one of the board, and there's pushback from those boards.
Well, first of all, we're the ones funding it, so they can complain all they want.
But it is supposed to be one of those board members. And if, and maybe when we have the new director in and he's promised training, it can come across at that time with the new director, it would be a nice way to kind of bring that in, but it would be a savings to the township, and it's one of the duties and responsibilities of that board.
I would collect it with note that we modify that to say it's the interim part-time zoning, zoning secretary.
Yes.
And we especially correct me, as true to the director, once we have the direct, the director of zoning plays.
Well, I mean, I agree, because, you know, first of all, we have people that are attending these meetings, are being paid for all the meetings for volunteering, basically for whatever that stipend is, to be there, and in turn, we're turning around, we're asking the taxpayers to pay additional costs to keep the minutes that they're not supposed to. And I'm gonna go on record right now, I'm not happy with either of those boards. I'm not, I'm not happy with the way they conducted themselves, I'm not happy with the complaints we get from our citizens during those hearings, you know, and they can push back all they want, but it's my recommendation to this board that we seriously look at these applicants when they go to reply. Scrumming.
Yep, that's what I'm thinking here.
Well, I mean, you take a look through it, the function that you always have an alternate there, and typically, there's a very low probability of knowing whether or not that alter, or there's high probability of knowing whether or not that alternate is gonna come into play, that, and even in the absence of, say, you've got the entire board there plus the alternate, say, a member of the board has to stand on that situation, which pulls the alternate, then there's no reason in that standing moment of individuals standing can cover for that.
Yeah, Mr. Hawes, it was my recommendation at the meetings I attended that the alternate take the minutes, since they're there anyways, or the amount of meetings each year have not been more than six a year, I said to each of you, could take, you know, you could be fair and take a turn, if you wanted to do it that way, both were...
Possibly keep a little bit of that, stay on some of the, the real relevant specific matters that have, and they're definitely adding this on to further.
Yeah, there was significant pushback and...
Well, some of those individuals, it's just been taken for granted, since they've been on that board for as long, they're really losing sight of what their responsibilities are.
Their recommendation was for the administrator to take the minutes, and that was declined.
I can tell you they had that one. So, that being said, if we can just have, say, interim part-time zoning, every area.
Very good.
Any further discussion? Roll call please.
So, you just wanna add the word interim?
Yes.
Roll call, Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And that ends the administrator report.
Thank you, Lisa, we go to the fire department, Chief Snyder.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report.
Chief, I want to commend you for giving that mutually given and received numbers in line.
Thank you. I did speak to Chief Ogerman, he had a little problem dispatching, and then they were still telling us how it caused it, they shouldn't have been so, I know I was carding on the email that he sent, we discussed it, but, I guess, hopefully we'll see that, the numbers are made, should be submitted.
Anybody else? I don't have any questions. Kim, rule number two, nice job, Chief.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution addressing a duty that's coming up, and we're asking for the county auto certification for the additional one mil on item number two here.
I'll sub, fire number two.
I will second that discussion. Just for the record, we're just seeking questions, or we're asking questions and seeking answers at this point. Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Thank you, item number three would be the same provision, so it could be for what happened.
Sub move.
Second, discussion? Item number one called please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four would be certification for two mil.
Sub move.
Second, discussion? Hearing number one called please.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
And item number five is a resolution to, to Ryan, for Ryan Karen and Eric Key, which have successfully completed their physical assessments for the skilled and to perform this other job, which is hiring those two individuals effective June 1st to June 11th.
Sub move.
Second, discussion, Chief, is the third person, how far along in the process? And I know we had to start over.
We did, and then we got a phone call from him accepting another position.
Again, so we're gonna start over again? Because...
We noted by different chief charges with the smugness to accept another job.
How is putting on the two right now gonna throw your scheduling off?
It's not, we wanna get these guys on, at least to get them to move themselves.
Okay.
The objective is this, just to add one more per shift, per shift, so two of the three.
And you're just going to the next person in line?
Yeah, we're gonna get contact with the next individual, our assessments will be good, and see if he can...
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll go to the road department, Mr. Isina.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number one is the monthly report. I'd like to report that our street sweeping has been going well, we should be done within the next 10 days. I do...
Yeah, both working?
Yeah, they're both out. Patching's pretty much now, it's complete, now we're starting new road repair, that's what's starting this week. Our payment bids are out for a bit.
Hey, Joe, just from perspective of overall activity, do we have any updates, just from the county engineer, what's going on over with the corner church alignment with Apple Grove? I know there's been a number of poles that have been set over there, just for the sake of public record.
I talked to, to Kate Torres, they are gonna start, I do believe, mid-June with the realignment of the bridge, and everything offered that they need to do for this year, beaver excavating to get the project. I do believe nothing will be tore out until next year, when they prioritize it and then run the roadway up to meet the capital. This year they're gonna concentrate on building a new bridge in a gas lines, water lines, and that stuff.
The existing bridge would be taken down last?
Yeah. That's what we're actually, the intent is right now.
Okay, so we're not...
That's kinda...
They're hoping for, for...
They're gonna, as I said, that'll become a cul-de-sac right soon.
Yeah, that'll, it'll call the...
Right at the bottom of the...
Right at the bottom of the hill where the old bridge is at the current, so, that will end up maintaining here, that portion of it.
Okay.
It's on, it's on its way.
It's a larger share of the budget, you're seeing, with the possibility that that's a five, like one, it's a...
Item number two is a resolution to... Yeah, item number two, resolution two, three, two.
Is this on two minutes in here?
Though with Cargill, the icing in the county, Star County just helping to co-op for salt for next year, 55.21, the town is just $4.64 increase.
I will, I'll move on.
It should be. Do you have one? It should be, and, uh...
Well, it's a county engineer's, which nicely here.
Well, that's just...
But we have to enter into it also.
We don't have, I don't have the resolution, but I'll move on. Rule number two, going into the question, speaking for us, and for the discussion.
Just to clarify, Joe, any, just because we love to compare, just anywhere on what the state was supposed to be, because we take a look, two years back, first year, the state was super cheap, a lot of folks were going, hey, why didn't you go that route? The reality was, folks who went that route weren't getting material, so prices are no good if you can't get material. Last year, we stayed with County, and then the state actually quadrupled their price from the first year, but it was twice what we were, what we were paying.
Even higher in some areas. This year, I don't think they opened their bids till next week, or, they had two, two different bids, they had a summertime, they'll upbid, you know, for this time of the year, and then their other bid, they're not opening till like in September for the winter bid. I do know the county received bids from three different suppliers, Cargill was at 55.21, some other place they did, remember, was $75, and Morton's Salt was $95. So, we actually got the cheapest price through Cargill that, you know, that we get, even though it was an increase of $4.64 for, for the other stockpiles, we already gotta get hard last year, and I think that's part of the problem, why, because they were not sold, they were, the thing we were getting at the end of winter is coming straight from the mine, they didn't have anything stockpiled. If they can build it up, we don't have such a bad market, maybe Scott should dance a little earlier.
Yeah, and you guys can't say it.
Anthony, do we, do we do this, or...
No, I think you guys are due to do a motion of resolution to adopt the, you know, 55.
Entering the purchasing agreement with, with the Star County engineers to use Cargill for, at their price.
Yes, 55.
I'm sure that's all the resolutions, are they?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And item number three is, on their, is the resolution authorized the posting of no parking signs.
That was added on?
It was added on, on the north side of Diamond, from Mill Branch to Diamond Park, on Mill Branch from Diamond to Prospect, or, we post on May 15th, it'll be taken down on May 18th, and it'll be posted on the 29th and taken down on June 1st, this is for McCross. Do we want to do this, Rob?
Yes, sir. It's our normal no parking signs, it's a global temporary signs.
I will sub move.
Second, discussion, hearing number one called please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Be in order. Thank you. Thank you, Jill. Go to the zoning department, I'll have Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number one is the zoning monthly report. I do also wanna just point out to the board that if I ever do approve a transient vendor, which so far they have not, we will be putting the application and the pictures of the people that would be going around in the neighborhood on the website. I thought that would add a level of safety and security, but so far, we have had no approvals of transient vendors. I think in part that's because of the addition of the background check.
Now, are we taking those pictures, or are they responsible for bringing those into us?
We can, number one, either take them, or if they're, well, we'll take the picture. But sometimes, yeah, if they're drivers, I can, I can cut and copy from their driver's license, unless the driver's license looks a lot different, otherwise I'll take the picture.
I would rather we do.
Yeah.
New pictures at the time.
Yeah, so, but so far, we haven't had any. At the monthly report, you'll see that we are down a little this month compared to last month, but overall, year-to-date, is about by $32,000. Some new residential constructions, new commercial additions, and one new business. And then, item number two is a resolution regarding a junk motor vehicle at the vacant lot on 21st Street Northeast.
I will sub move on to A. Second, discussion? Eric, there's a new piece of legislation that's passed, I'm looking into downtown, because I got a phone call from Lake, so regards to us removing disabled or junk vehicles from private property, allows us to contract with a specific tenant company.
And they get an affidavit from the...
Fiscal officer stating, you know, how the vehicle's going to be removed and by own, allows us to receive money and sell that vehicle to the salvage company. For a simple removal? Mm-hmm. Really, do you know the house bill or anything?
I haven't.
Oh, this is bad, I can get it from her tomorrow. Okay, I have a... I'll get it. Is it passed yet, or is it... It's, uh, it's, it's going, it's supposed to be passed here any day. Okay, so... As a matter of fact, let me double check on it, because, um... It was part of House Bill 468, which, that was last year. Okay. According to this, it took effect, 3/23/15 of this year. Permit salvage yard to contract with township or receive salvage titles from the junk vehicle removed from the property. But it's Remise Code 505-1871. Great. All right, we'll go. For discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
I do wanna add, there were many more slated for the agenda tonight, but I was able to work with those folks to do where they have cleaned up a lot of these properties. There have been many more inspections since, so we may have a large amount for next meeting. We will see what happens in the meantime. And zoning number three is a resolution to authorize the... And zoning number three is a resolution to authorize the purchase and payment of postage in the amount of four thousand fifty dollars from Fund zero one eight twenty-six N.
I will subdue.
Second. Discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And that's the end of the zoning report.
Okay, um, we will run the parks department, Mr. Franklin.
I'll remind gentlemen, it's the matter of work.
Essential, we're trying to understand. Thanks for keeping up with everything.
Thank you. They've worked very, very hard.
More weather at the beginning of spring.
It's not been easy, but they've done a great job.
Item number two.
Item number two, gentlemen, is a resolution for the hiring of one Jay Jordan as a full-time maintenance employee for the Parks, Buildings and Grounds Department. Effective May thirteen, twenty fifteen, at a rate of twelve dollars per hour and be paid with benefits from Fund fourteen dash eight dash zero one dash A. I think the pre-employment screening results.
Subdue.
Second, and discussion.
Mr. Jordan comes with a plethora of experience in wildlife conservation and degrees to matching and has some pesticide certification from out of state. Then we're looking to get him involved with the pesticide certification in state as soon as we possibly can. And we're likely to, he found us and we found him. He's also in the audience tonight, so I'd like to welcome him.
Welcome. Well, not yet. We haven't voted. Roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to hire one Ryan Shaw, also with all of the same aforementioned. Places from the same funds, same hourly rate, pending the reemployment screening results.
I will subdue.
Second, discussion. Bring in roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Uh, Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Item number four, just simply a recap of a couple of events we had last week. One in conjunction with not only road, but in particular fire. A lot of community organizations over at the fire station and Schneider Community Park, we all say the kids day. To much, much better weather, chief. Had the prior year and the kids came out and families came out. It was a very, I think, true success in collaboration of not only inner departments from the township, but other outside agencies as well. Secondly, the food truck roundup on Saturday, the night went fairly well. We were a little slow to start, but as the evening picked up, so did the crowds and so did the food. And it was a lot of fun. I think we've kicked it off well and I would just remind the community, if you want them to stay, come out and support them. Come out, have a sandwich or have a bite to eat.
I apologize for not being able to.
I see why.
No, I actually had, I'm a mess with my doctor. I'm excited a week ago, but I wish I could have been there.
I ended up forty, so don't feel bad.
The thing is, Monday, May eighteenth will be the first supper market at five till seven-thirty, so everybody's going to get a chance to come back out and have a bite to eat later. If there's no other questions, show them that the police department's here.
Thank you, Rob. Can I go to the law director at the avenue? Okay, we're going to the portion of our agenda now for public speaks. If anybody in the audience has any concern or subject they would like to talk to the board about, you may do so at this time. We only ask that you give your name and address to fiscal officer before you speak, so he clearly has it. And afterwards, before you leave, please sign in on the sign-in sheet in the back of the, uh, the meeting hall here, so he can make sure he's got everything spelled correctly for the record.
I have something. My name is Regina Corine, and I would like to know how.
I need your address.
Oh, thirty-two fourteen Thirty-third Street Northeast.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I would like to know about the closure of End Row. At Thirty-fourth Street, I called the road department and nobody called me back because it is making a traffic. There's more traffic on the street that I live on. And one day, we thought if we lived there, we're going to have to pave the road or something. It was just a temporary thing. So who decided to close it? You know, nobody came around the neighborhood or there was no discussion with the people that live in that area about closing that. So if someone could explain that, please.
Well, you start. This started about a year ago, I would say. So the residents that live over there on End Row, they started by coming to the border trustees meetings, raising concerns about things going on on their street. And if one thing led to another, they actually petitioned, formed a lighting district on their street and put street lights. And then they ultimately petitioned the county commissioners for the vacation of End Row. And there was a couple hearings held on the End Row road. I'm not sure if they were reporting in the newspaper. I believe they were. But those hearings on the closing were held at the start of the commissioners. And I'm not saying the commissioners, you know, take, you know, are full for this. This is something we requested also on behalf of the residents for the commissioners to consider. Based on the amount of traffic and truck traffic that was using that End Row as a straight shot through the neighborhood going right into the Walmart parking lot. They were getting a lot of, uh, yes, significant safety issues. There were, you know, there were being a lot of litter and trash, you know, directly around that area of the Walmart. Commissioners raised the same concerns, you know, with the understanding probably some of that traffic was going to get rerouted somewhere else. All within the hopes, because of the way that people should be going in and out of there and getting that way, they should be using Harman. And not using End Row as a, as an exit and interest in the Walmart. And so we knew with an understanding that possibly some of that traffic was going to pick up maybe on one of the other side streets when that happened.
Well, yes, it has. Also too, how would the, is it mainly just the two folks that live there on the corner? Because there's.
Actually, we got a roomful.
We had a roomful and a petition with about fifty signatures.
So the other, the.
Yeah, we had about fifty signatures from the people that lived down End Row.
Well, you know, I just wondered because I didn't get an answer and so I thought I'd come here and ask.
How much traffic is?
A lot.
Having me on there.
It's, and plus you talk about trash and stuff. We have the same thing. So the trash being thrown there from where we're at. And every, you know, when, you know, the Walmart was built and all that's built up, that traffic is a lot, a lot on Harman. You know, of course, I live across from the drive-through and then there's another drive-through and then there's the Roman Burger place, the Mr. Petero. And that, that has increased the traffic flow. So it does make, it does back up traffic. You know, I've had three, four cars waiting on Thirty-four, Thirty-third Street to get out.
Joe, just out of curiosity, can we put the buggy out there so we can get a traffic counter?
On Thirty-third Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, as soon as it's completed where the sheriff is requesting it to be right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put the buggy out there so we can get a true traffic counter and speed thing and then we can look at some things over there maybe.
Well, I just wondered, you know, why? Because all of a sudden the thing said it's closed and I hadn't heard anything. I mean, I tried to look at paper, but I don't.
Yeah, to vacate that road, the two people at that street that you mentioned, they, they actually had to take over that last, how many feet of End Row going?
One hundred eighty-six.
So that's now their responsibility to maintain the pace. So they had to agree to that as part of the vacation over there too. But we will make sure that we try to stay on top of what's going on over there.
Right. Well, it would have been nice if other people in the neighborhood might have a flyer or something stuck in their door about what the heck was going on. Because, you know, we, even though we're not on that street, it does affect people living in that area. And I don't know about the other side of the street, but, but Thirty-third does see an increase in traffic. I've noticed that since the, that road is closed. Because people come up, they go across and they do it, so.
Okay, we'll start by trying to get a traffic counter on the buggy and see what the speeds are and make, and we can go from there. See if there's some other things we can do to maybe go address it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I have another question. About the same thing. Now, they have the stop signs there. It's a four-way stop still. Is that going to change to?
At End Row?
You saw the stop signs there. Are they going to be different?
Probably.
Probably going to be a three-way stop.
Three-way?
Yeah.
Okay.
We were just letting everything settle before we pre-located the stop sign.
Yeah, I'll probably remove the one on the other side where it's a lot coming west of the right hand.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns?
I'm Judy Pilcock. I live at four two zero seven Plain Center Northeast, and I'm here from the Historical Society for some information for the group as well as the trustees. This is our tenth year, believe it or not, since we've started in two thousand and five and things are looking up. We have a good organization. We have excited people. We've done a lot of historic things. We've been involved in a lot of different things in the community, especially lately. And I wanted to share with you something we consider pretty special. We have a new publication. And it's called Cruising Through Plain Township. And it has, it's a self-guided tour that you can take through the northeast quarter, which would mean from Fifty-Fifth Street North to Mount Pleasant and from Market over to Becker. Our hope is that this is the first of a series of four. We want to do each quarter. And we've chosen twenty-four historic and some not so historic, but interesting things in the area. We have written up about the history and we have directions and a map for the tour and some other fact things about the history and some other things in my tangent. I bet you drive past these places all the time and sometimes you say, I wonder what the story is about this place or about that place. This little book could help you to understand that. So we are selling this for ten dollars apiece. We don't have them currently because this is fairly new. We don't have them out in stores or anything right now. But should you be interested in having one, you have some with me, or you can contact people in the Historical Society to get it. Thank you.
I sure would like some information about that for the township newsletter and also our website. That would be great.
Something definitely quote shallow.
And touch.
Facebook and Twitter. And it'd be great for our website.
To have, we can help get that promoted because the Historical Society's been a huge value partner to the township, whether it's our.
We've had a good working relationship.
And dating back to the bicentennial, essentially that's four, that would have been four years. A little over five years. Just halfway through.
This was actually born out of the bicentennial because we have so many people that were interested in the tour. We were hoping for one trolley and we had like three, that we decided that maybe having something that people could take their own tour. We were.
Basically, also. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yes. I have a couple of questions to ask.
Sir, if you please take my name.
Answered.
You can take my name.
Frank, this is Frank Gerson Slater. Address is twenty-four oh nine Nineteenth Street Northwest. Okay, of course, this deals with the Hall of Fame. They're buying property. Everybody knows that. It's within the zoning, I should say. Now, when they buy a partial of property, is that property automatically brought in a different zone? Or is it still residential?
Sir, that property would stay in the zone as it existing is. It's upon the Hall of Fame to have to apply for any change in the zone.
Yes, I mean, if they do, just for that one.
Well, if you talk.
Or is it stamped automatically?
Frank, are you talking about if they, the Hall of Fame purchases a property and they annex it into the city? Is that what you're speaking about?
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, the city would be responsible for the, it would remain the same until the city changed it.
Yeah, so in other words, if, it's like spot zoning, if I'm correct, right?
No, because it would fall in line with whatever the city of Canton has in place over there. They would make that property the same as what is immediately adjacent to it. So let's say that the Hall of Fame is selling general business and they annex that property into the city. As part of the annexation process, once that becomes part of the city, they would go ahead and then they would run through their process to make that property the same as zoning as the Hall of Fame is.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, okay, if they buy a partial property, okay? And immediately they take it down to their thing and they pass, we process it and annex it in a different, under a different zone.
That wouldn't be considered spot zoning because it would be in a different jurisdiction and it would probably match up with what the city has already in place. It wouldn't be different.
Because I can't see how, I kind of, it is residential and if they change it, Eric, I'm just saying, if it is residential and they buy one little spot and they change it to a different zoning. I mean, the property still is within the Plain Township.
And even if it's not annexed, you know, it would remain what is currently zoned in Plain Township. But if they annex it, the city of Canton's going to make the zoning as they choose to make their zoning.
So in other words, you're saying that if they take and bought it and they, and actually annexed it at one property and exactly how they go about it, but they changed it.
Could they change it?
They could.
Sure, surely it's a different jurisdictional control.
But how could they whenever it's?
Because it's totally.
Because it's in a new jurisdiction.
Our jurisdiction doesn't have oversight control of their jurisdiction.
But still, it is actually, it is still in the Plain Township.
It's no longer as soon as it is annexed. It is no longer Plain Township. It is the city of Canton. And therefore, their ordinances and rules govern.
Well, then that would be spot. That would be spot zoning.
No, it would be spot zoning if it stayed in the township and we'd go, yeah, we're going to go ahead and make that industrial or we're going to go ahead and make that, you know.
I'm saying the city is spot, not you. The city is.
It would be spot zoning, Frank, because it would be, it would be similar or the same as what the property next to it already is. And they're, and it would then, inside the city.
Well, that's not within the city.
If they annex it, it would be whatever the city.
How can they annex one property into the city when it's in plain local?
Hall owner, law, holder wants it or whoever the buying party is.
Whoever owns that property.
Well, somebody had to take, or somebody in the county commission had to make agreement on that.
No.
No, they didn't.
What the Hall of Fame has made an agreement with the city of Canton, with whatever properties they purchased will be annexed into the city once they purchase them. Um, there's a process that has to be filed. Most likely, they will file a process for what they call an expedited to annexation, which they have a hundred percent of the property owners agreeing to be annexed. Um, the commissioners, they sent us a letter.
You mean a hundred percent of the people in that thing?
Yeah, one property owner and the Hall of Fame owns it. They say, I want to be annexed into the city. That's a hundred percent. So the commissioner would ask us if we have an objection. Most likely, they don't even hold a hearing.
Because it's a private, private property transaction. We don't have, we don't have a say in that, nor would you. It'd be like me coming to make some decisions that directly affect, directly affect your property. That's private, private property that's owned by that specific party. And because of that, that individual has the right to solicit the city.
You mean, anybody in the Plain Township can try to change just because if somebody buys. buys?
Honestly, like, let's say right, right now, I went over there and picked up a half, half dozen of those homes because I'm a real estate...
Period, you're not saying, period, I'm not saying that area, I'm saying another area. Any area.
They have to be adjacent, they have to be touching.
They have to be continuously touching.
And then the individual, then the interested party has to be able to make an argument before the zoning commission, if it's township-related, trying to justify their point for making that change. And then the zoning commission's going to say yea or nay. Then that recommendation ultimately comes to the board of trustees. In certain situations, we also, if it's new development, we'll get a recommendation from regional planning and then...
Are you saying it has to be within or adjacent to their property? Is that what you're saying?
To be annexed, yes.
For them to be annexed, yes. I wonder if they bought a piece of property, say, two blocks away from their line.
That wouldn't be something that they would probably at that point try to annex until they became continuously, meaning they became adjacent.
They continue to come. Acquire.
They would acquire until they got to that point, then they would try to annex it.
Yeah, I would check to see if the property that they purchased has been changed to a different zone.
If it's still in the township, you can check at our county zoning office, but we haven't had any zoning change requests in that area in over a decade.
Good. Another thing that I'd like to bring up is that during the Hall of Fame run, okay, on Blake Avenue, they had the RTA buses, a string of them, all the way down the hill, down to the bottom of the hill, tying up traffic. Now, they have their parking down at the school that they can park the buses. They don't have to park on the street, okay? Or they have the, over at the Hall of Fame, they have parking. I don't think that they should tie up Blake.
Like accessing the road or parking up road?
Parking on the road. Waiting. A whole string of them. I mean, about, you're looking at about maybe 10 buses lined up. That is ridiculous.
Well, I, I want to throw our names into this, but I know, I ran, I ran the race as a half and Anthony, you ran it as a full. There's some logistical factors that had to be completed there. In fact, the reason they had those buses...
I'm saying, period, they can have them, but they can park them someplace else. That's all I'm saying, is if stopped on the highway blocking traffic.
Sir, if you would, just...
Okay, I'll give you four, I'll give you four, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The, I mean, the alternative was either have all those race participants parking through, parking through neighborhoods, parking at the Hall of Fame. And based upon the registry account, there wasn't sufficient parking. So the organizers of the event essentially coordinated through Assartha to have those buses picking spectators and participants up in Belvedere Village, at the Belvedere Village Mall, to which they shuttle runners and or spectators down there. They had set time windows. And then once the race was over, they shuttle, they brought those buses back in in order to transport those folks all back up to the wall to park there. Logistically, that was the safer of the, safer of the two options. And I mean, there was a number of safety forces, whether it be the sheriff's office, the police department, the fire departments. When we have to look at the net cumulative safety factor, the slight inconvenience of some buses on that, on that road in a short period versus a significantly greater volume of cars.
I'm not debating that. I'm debating that they could park them down there in the school parking lot or over at the Hall of Fame.
The reason they were along that street was because they were waiting to pick up the runners and stuff and...
They picked them up one bus at a time. You're looking at 10 buses waiting for one bus to get loaded. They go, here comes another bus. Like a chain reaction, okay?
But with how...
That's why I'm saying that they could park the buses down there and deal with one bus. When one bus is full, they got radios and so on, they could say, we're full, send up another bus. They send up another bus.
Unfortunately, with how the route was laid out and how runners were still coming into the stadium to finish, along with what the egress pattern was and how the safety forces were set up, it wasn't all, it was for a period of time where they dropped them off or they were getting them up. With how their routes track passed over some of the streets there, the sheriff's deputies and the police department were very cognizant about traffic to get through there if there weren't runners coming through. Otherwise, they had to hold if there was a mass of runners coming, coming through there. And because they hadn't come in and how the routes had, they really all had a specific egress route, it wasn't like they could go any which way they wanted, so.
Period, that is a two-lane highway and they had one lane blocked off all the way down there and made a very inconvenience for the people all the way down here coming up from Fulton to Blake behind, down at the bottom of the hill to take and wait and then try to get up through on one lane. You talk about safety. Period, hold it. I think common sense says that they got space to park those buses and have them waiting someplace else instead of congesting the highway.
We're going to have to respectfully disagree because I know this town, along with the other entities, put a significant amount of time into organizing this, whether it's...
You mean, all those people are going to climb on all those buses all at once?
Given the, given the thousands of individuals that were there, those...
I lived right there and there was one bus and it might take, depends on where the race was or what, that might take anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes just for one bus and sometimes maybe a little bit longer.
Frank, Frank, I don't mean to cut you off, but we've allowed this, you, but going on probably about 15 minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we're trying to steal the show.
No, 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 we, we allowed 5 minutes and this has gone on for about 15. And I mean, I don't think, you know, that from the sounds of it, that we're going to agree on the bus issue because there was a lot of, like Scott said, a lot of logistics that went in place to put that race together. And it's, whenever you have an event like that...
What other question is?
Hold on, hold on, Frank. You know, whenever you have an event like this, you are going to make everybody 100% happy, but I can tell you from this year to previous years, the number of complaints that we've had this year versus previous years has almost been nonexistent. We haven't had any. So logistically, I think we got a lot of things better this year than we did last year. Was it perfect? No, it probably wasn't perfect. And nothing's ever going to be perfect when you hold an event like that. Because a lot of cases, a lot of people were inconvenienced because of road blockages, traffic, could be buses, could be a lot of different things were involved. But I think this event this year went off pretty successfully as a whole versus some of those events that's been held around that stadium. In the past, we've had far less issues this year than we ever had before. So, you know, next year, this could be some of the things that we look into again when it comes back to us, when they're planning the event again and future ones. But right now, there's no sense of sitting here and...
Yeah, well, I just want to draw it to your attention that I think that could be handled a little bit differently. That's what this is about.
We'll, we'll take it under advisement. We will.
Okay, and who pays for the cost of all that?
The organizers do. Not a single taxpayer dollar. Even if they have our road department set the block, the block gates and stuff, the race organizers come to...
The sheriffs and...
...the buyers team, they had to go to all those entities. And that's one of the distinguishing factors that made this race organizer significantly...
Different.
Different was they had all that buttoned up before a lot of this stuff ever, ever got announced. And I can tell you, I sat through that first Canton Marathon as a trustee representative along with Joe and Chief Snyder and so forth. And the logistics and the backend preparation was, was a lot better, a lot, a lot nicer.
So, so you're saying that everything wasn't, everything was paid out of whose pocket for that, the police, everything?
Race organizers.
Race organizers.
Each community would, essentially, we invoice for our services, the sheriff invoices for their services, Canton City invoices for their services, and then it's up to those race organizers. They either prepaid in some situations, all, or a portion of, or the remaining balance or the whole balance was due, whatever the net term was that they had with each party and how they negotiated those terms and conditions.
So they were all paid independently by the race organizers?
Yes, yes, just out of curiosity. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. You have a nice day.
You too. Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, that'll close public speaks. We will now go to conservative trustees. Does either of the trustees have anything that would lead to...
Just for the record, we are holding the May Star County Township Association meeting at Central Station, so...
The date is...
That's...
May 21st.
21st, yeah.
It's Tuesday right now.
It's the, it should be the third Thursday.
Thursday.
And generous water, if there was time enough to sponsor a...
I think I might come and eat your food.
You're welcome.
I don't want to be there. Fiscal officer? You have that?
Okay, we'll go to approval limits of April 20, 2015, and I will move their approval.
Second.
Discussion, hearing non, roll call please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Mr. Davis.
And Mr. Juvasus?
I will also move adoption in a special meeting of May 5, 2015.
Subut.
Discussion, hearing non, roll call please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Juvasus?
Yes.
Okay.
There is a need for an executive session. Being here by resolve by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to adjourn the executive session at 7:25 PM from this regular meeting of May 12, 2015, as authorized under Ohio Rule 121, Act 227, for the purpose and consideration of 1B, employment of a public employer official, 1F, compensation of a public employer official, per re-conference with the law director, other retained consequences or independent or pending or imminent court action after preparing for and conducting and reviewing negotiations and bargaining sessions of public employees.
Second.
Discussion, hearing non, roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Juvasus?
Yes, sir.